Today, short and straight to the point. And... You know, most Christians do not actually know why some calamities could happen to them. They are born again, they don't know why... Oh, they may not be born again. Some people may not be born again, and they don't know why calamities or calamitous... Is that a good accent? Calamitous, calamitous, calam... whatever. Or troublesome things could befall them. You know, if I put my finger right there in Numbers, in chapter 25, which I'm coming back to, and I go right over to Isaiah in chapter 46. There's something there that God mentioned about Babylon. And if you see very carefully... Is it 46? Is it 40... 47? And you take that along with Revelations in chapter 17, I believe, that it says, "And the spirit of the Lord took him up on that day and showed him that the great horror, the Babylon the Great, has fallen." You see, the spirit of Babylon is a spirit of witchcraft, is a spirit of enchantment, is a spirit of magos, sorcery. If you read very carefully, you'll see there all those three things. And then, wherever you have sorcery and witchcraft... Oh, you read also in Isaiah here how God says that they are ladies, they are girls, they were trolling, they were trolling on the pole. Where you get that, pastor? It's there in Isaiah, chapter 47. "They were trolling on the pole." They were enchanting, they were seductive. And you will see there in Revelations in chapter 2 how God spoke to the church, I believe in Sardinia, not so remembering, but there are seven churches there, and God had one thing to say about each of them. And He said to the church in Sardinia, or Sardinus, that He remembers Him, O her, that she has some people that teach the doctrine of Belem. Doctrine. So what's the doctrine of Belem, Raul? I'll tell you what the doctrine of Belem is. The doctrine of Belem is what makes calamity. Isaiah, chapter 47, and verse 8. Okay, read from... Let me read to you from verse 5. "Sit thou silently and get thee into the darkness, you daughter of Caldiens, for you shall no more be called a lady of the kingdoms." "I was angry with my people, and I have polluted my inheritance," God says, "and given them into your hand. And you did not show them any mercy upon the ancient. You have very heavily laid your yoke. And you said, 'I shall be a lady forever,' so that you did not lay these things to her, neither did remember the latter end of it." That's another thing that it did. They did not have the knowledge of the Word of God. You remember very vividly in Hosea, chapter 4, verse 6, "Because you have rejected knowledge, my people are destroyed for lack of knowledge." They run crazy, they run errant, they run out of control. That's the word perish. That's the word perish means. The word saved is from the word salvation, and salvation is from the word sorcery. That means physical as well as emotional, as well as mental, as well as physical, as well as spiritual, as well as financial, as well as relational safety. Salvation. Five types of salvation. And but we also have, for perishing, we have, you know, all the aspects of perishing right there. God says, "Because you did not retain your knowledge, my knowledge, in your heart, I will reject you from being priest." In Romans, in chapter 1, it talks... Look at Romans, in chapter 1. Still talking about people who do not want to have the knowledge of God in their hearts. Romans, in chapter 1. And I'm gonna have to search that out. In verse 16 downwards, look at 17. "For therein is righteousness of God, revealed from faith to faith." Where? In the gospel of Christ. 18. "For the wrath of God is revealed from heaven against ungodliness, and unrighteousness of men who hold it truth in unrighteousness; because that which may be none of God is made manifest to them." Verse 19. "For God hath showed it to them. For the invisible things of Him from creation of the world are clearly seen, been understood by the things which are made, even his eternal power and Godhead, so that they are without excuse." They are without excuse. They are without excuse. "And then they changed the truth of God into rely and worship the creature more than the Creator, who is to be blessed forever." This is the reason, verse 26, why God made calamity befall them. God gave them up. God gave them up to vile affection. "For the women did change their natural use into that which is against nature, and likewise also the men, leaving the natural use of the woman, burning their lost one through another; and men with men working that which is unsightly, and receiving in themselves that recompense of their error, which was made." Look at verse 28. "And even as they did not like..." Circle it in your Bible. "They did not like to retain God in their knowledge." That's why. You see that? To the Romans. They did not like to retain God in... See, and that's one good verse that I read to people who say to me, "Well, but God made them male and female, male, he and she made them. But what about he/she? Or she/male?" I've got nothing to say to a she/male or he/she. It's confusion. God did not make he/she. God did not make Stephen and Samson. God made Adam and Eve. And what about a she/he, he/she? She/male. Do you know now that they have, in our ever-evolving richness of English language, they also have words that you can coin, and words that you can form, and words that can... You can just decide to just form. And they will put it in the encyclopedia. They will put it in the dictionary. They already have she/male. That's not where I'm going tonight, anyway. But the reason why God gave them up. Look at, look at verse 28. "They did not like to retain God in their knowledge, so God gave them over to a reprobate mind." That's why. That's why somebody can stop and say, "I'm a man, but I just feel like a woman." "Oh, I'm a woman, I just... But I'm trapped, trapped, I'm trapped, I'm helpless." And you see their faces just go, "I'm helpless, I'm helpless. I really want to change." Now, you will fail in your own power. One, you need to retain the knowledge of God. That's the only thing that cures a reprobate mind. A reprobate mind is spoken about in 2 Corinthians, in chapter 12, as that mind that does not want to acknowledge God, or remember God, or like anything of God, or give glory to God for what God has done. That's a reprobate mind. That's what the Bible says in 2 Corinthians, I believe, in chapter 12, in verse 5. It says, "Examine yourselves whether you are in the faith, or whether you have backs leading to a reprobative mind." Or a reprobate mind. A reprobate mind is a mind that does not know what is right from what is wrong. How can you tell me that you feel uncomfortable in the perfect nature that God has created? You know why? Because God gave them up. God gave them up to a reprobate mind. So their mind is expired. What you need to do is not struggling and crying, "Ah!" You don't need to do that. All you need to do is to inspire your mind and renew your mind by the Word of God. The knowledge of God. So God gave them up because they did not want... They did not like. That's why I like... See, I like the way the KJV, King James Russian, says it right here. It says, "They did not like. They just did not like to retain God in their knowledge. So God gave them over to a reprobate mind. To do those things which are not convenient, be infil'd with all unrighteousness." And look at, "Fornication, wickedness, covetousness, maliciousness, full of envy, martyr, debate, deceit, malignity, whisperers, bug biters, haters of God, despiteful, proud, posters, inventors of evil things, disobedient to parents, without understanding, covenant breakers, truths breakers, without natural affection, implacable." Implacable means people that cannot be begged. They will not take your apology. You offend them, that's the end of the story. Implacable means, it means, he doesn't want your peace. Unmerciful. "Who, knowing the judgment of God, that they which commit such things are worthy of death, and not just those who commit them alone..." Listen to this now, you gotta be very careful. Not those who commit these things alone, but also them that have pleasure in them that do them. And look at what God said exactly in Isaiah. In Isaiah, Isaiah and 47. I'm turning my Bible right there again. Isaiah 47. You hear this in verse 8. Therefore, hear this now. "You are given over to pleasure..." Oh, I'm sorry, verse 7. "And you said, 'I shall be a lady forever,' so that thou did not lay these things in your heart." Did you see that? Did you see the parallel? I always tell you, each time you do your Bible study, in your personal Bible study, make sure that you look for parallels, look for examples, look for another place, one or two... Look for two or three places in the Bible, from Genesis to Revelation, where you find a story that is incidental, coincidental, or almost equal to what you are reading. I've shown you from Revelations about Babylon, the harlot has fallen, great Babylon. And you can see what she did. She made the nation sick with her whoredom. Babylon did not sleep with the chippies, the cheap guys around. Babylon the Great made sure, the great horror, made sure that she slept with the kings. She slept in the corridor of power. And the more powerful you associate with powerful people, the more likely... See, listen. If a powerful man believes in a Lord Jesus Christ, what happens is that the church becomes powerful. If a powerful man also gets hooked on the devil, what happens is that the church enterprise suffers big problem. They will pass laws on your head that you cannot fight against. That's why we need to be more proactive in our service of our God. But look at what Babylon is doing. That's what we... Well, the devil is trying to steal it away from the church. We are supposed to be targeting the big fishes. We are supposed to be spreading the gospel to the big, big fishes, not giving opportunity to Babylon to sleep around and spread our HIV in the spiritual realm on the souls that... They will become useless souls that are roaming around the streets, the living deads, living corpses. I hope you know that there are living corpses, just riding your streets, very close to you where you live. And they don't even know about God. They don't want to know or retain the knowledge of God in their hearts. That's why God gives them a reprobate heart. Look at verse 8. "Therefore, hear this now. You are given to pleasures." The Bible says those that are given to pleasures in 1 Timothy, chapter 5, in verse 8, I believe, 5 through 8. Anyone, or I think verse 6. "Any woman or man given to pleasure while she live is a dead person." There are living corpses in our streets, in our neighborhoods, at our workplaces. They're dead. Anyone who does not believe in a Lord Jesus Christ as Lord and Savior is a dead person. His spirit is dead. He may be breathing, he may be having some twenty-twenty vision, but he don't have... He's a baba, black sheep can't see, know nothing. "Therefore, hear this now. You are given to pleasures. You dwell carelessly." They dwell carelessly. You say in your heart, "I am, and there is none else. There is none else beside me." You raise yourself to the position of God. "I will sit. I shall not sit as a widow, neither shall I know the loss of children." And God says, "Okay, what you think will never happen is exactly what's gonna happen to you." Some people say, "Well, maybe they are not married, maybe they don't have a child, maybe they don't have a husband, but they have a home. I will never lose my home." Oh, you're coming to lose your home, quick. "I will never lose my job." Oh, that job, God will tell you. Whatever you raise higher than God, it's gonna come down for the knowledge of the Lord Jesus Christ, to be exalted above it. Whatever it is. And verse 8. That's why calamity occurs on the people. "For these two things shall come to you..." See, Babylon says, "I will not become a widow, and I will not lose my children." And God says, "These two things exactly. In a moment in one day, you shall experience the loss of children and widowhood. They shall come upon thee in their perfection. For their multitude..." Look at what the people in Babylon are doing. "...multitude of your sorcery." Sorcery is from the word magos, from which we have sorcerers. Give me an example of somebody who was a sorcerer. The witch at Endor, that the fallen king saw had gone out to consult. You don't consult mediums. You don't consult the OJ board, the tarot cards. You don't consult necromancy. Necromancy is going to the graveyard and speaking to the graves and praying that something happens. Don't do it. The Bible says of the angel that sat at the tomb side of Jesus after he had risen, it says, "Who are you seeking from here? Who are you seeking here? Why do you seek the living amongst the dead? He's not here, is reason." Go tell his brethren what he told you. Now, I ask you the same question. Why you go through a graveyard where, apart from maybe going there to place a flower, or a bouquet of flower, there's nothing wrong, or maybe lay wreath, like the American Memorial Day yesterday, or two days ago, you can lay... The president went to lay, and the vice president laid wreaths at the Arlington Memorial Grave Side of many, many soldiers that had their tombstones over there. So you go there, that's all right. But you go there, you go, "I'm confused, I'm confused." And I get worried about people that pray to the dead. The Bible says, "God is not a God of the dead, He's the God of the living." You don't pray to the dead. I get worried when people die, and then they ask the priest to come and pray. And we pray for the departed, that, "Oh, God, that, 'O thou Lord, and thou shalt count it worthy in your presence to..." Make sure you open the door of heaven to him. "And make sure that his soul is counted worthy to stand at your presence, O Lord our God." Oh, lie. If he did not believe in a Lord Jesus Christ, your father, your grandmama, your whoever, your brother, whatever is right there, is burning in hell right away. You can be praying anything you want on the dead, that prayer won't be answered. You know why? Because the Bible says, Hebrews 9:27. For one moment it's given for one man to die, and after death, the judgment. You face the judgment of God. Hebrews 9:27. He says, "You can't pray for the dead." "Oh, God, you speak all the English accent you can speak. It make no difference." This is why calamity occurs on people. I've got 10 more minutes now. Listen. Let me show you very quickly. I've got something right here to show you about the doctrine of Belem. In Numbers, in chapter 25, because in the matter of Baal Pel. What is the matter of Baal Pel? God got angry with Belem in the matter of Baal Pel. Why? Because the Israelis were beaten in Baal Pel, for the first time under Moses. And Moses, God told them, "Go kill the Midianites." Who are the Midianites? The Midianites are one of the six sons that Abraham had after Sarah's death, Vaakatura. You had Shibna, you had Medan, you had Medien, and a few, three other brothers. Now, listen to this. And whom would the devil use? Somebody very close to you? Somebody who knows a lot about you? Somebody who has information about you? Like here, we see Belem had some information about the God of Israel. And that's why Belem was so very risky person. Risky person, dangerous person. If you know somebody who says the truth, they're a very dangerous people, too. They tell you exactly the way it is. You may not like them, but it's gonna be exactly what they said. The Bible says, "We cannot do anything against the truth but for the truth." Now, I'll tell you, the other risky people are the people who tell lies. They tell lies. They are risky people. I'm not gonna... The Bible says, "I'm not gonna bring a liar in my presence." By omission, by commission, by oppression, by default, they are liars. You're of your father, the devil, John 8:44. He cannot say the truth. Anything he says is a lie. That's why it's called the father of all lies. That's what Jesus said. A risky person is very risky. He's telling lies. A dangerous person, a good person, who is on the side of God, tells truth. That's why it's dangerous. It's dangerous against a lie. See? Truth is an enemy of the lie, and vice versa. Now, lie can be an enemy of the truth, but can never overcome the truth. That's why I said, "He is risky. He is not dangerous." Jesus says, "The real person that is dangerous is the one that is able to kill your soul and your body in hell." That's the person you're supposed to be afraid of. Not somebody who says, "I can torment your body, I can torment, I can kill your body." But he has no power to kill your soul. Now, Jesus says, that's the devil. The devil has no power to do anything to your soul. But Jesus says, "The real person that is dangerous is the person on the side of the truth." That says the truth all the time. Because truth is able to heal, but truth is also able to damn. He's able to damn by killing the soul, and the spirit, and the body. In fact, you can kill the spirit. He's able to bind you hands and feet and throw you into hell. But a lie can only mislead people and lead them to hell. But he cannot... He cannot... He doesn't have power to do that. That's why I say, "He is risky." However, dangerous, risky person is that kind of a person that knows information about you and tells a little bit of truth mixed with a whole lot, a whole gamut of lies. Somebody who is telling plenty of lies. We know he's the devil using this guy, but sometimes he says the truth also. He leaves you more confused, doesn't he? That's the kind of person Belem was. Belem was a magos, a magician, who was able to do a bra, kadabra, on the face of the people. And then he will pray, and fire... No, not fire. No, fire didn't come down in his time. But anything he says will come to pass somehow by demonic powers. But you can also see that Belem had conversations with God. He was not a prophet of God, he was a prophet of the devil. He was a magician. He wasn't a prophet of God. He was a soothsayer. He was possessed by the devil. But God says, "Don't you ever try to lay hands on the person I have blessed, because whom I have blessed is blessed forever and can be crushed." And that's exactly why they rented him. You know why they rented him? You know what the Bible calls him? The hire of unrighteousness in 1 Peter? Hire of unrighteousness. My friends, money, money is not evil. It's the spirit of hiring unrighteousness, paying, renting, hiring unrighteousness that is evil. Lost of money. Money, "I want some more, 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 more." You use sorcery, you use witchcraft. Wherever you find sorcery and witchcraft, you're gonna have, you know, those people pole dancing, and seduction, and witchcraft, and bewitching. In fact, the term seducing is from the word witchcraft, to be seductive. Did you not know that to be seductive is the spirit of Jezebel? You know why I know that? Because when Jehu was coming to execute judgment of the Lord, like prophesied by the prophet, when Jehu was riding furiously down, charging down at her, you know what she did? She started to paint her face and put on some nice rouge lipstick. And she began to wear a provocative dress. And where was she sitting? In front of a window, high top in the castle of Hehad, trying to seduce Jehu, the anointed prophet of God and a military commander. And but Jehu will not be brought under the power of witchcraft. Jehu will not be brought under the power of seductionism. Jehu will not be brought under the power of not wanting to keep the knowledge of God in their heart. "How shall a man keep his way strong before the Lord? By keeping his laws in your heart." Psalms 119. That's the only way. That's the only way, brothers and sisters. That's the only way we will stay pure in this coveted, covetous, in this polluted world every day. You see this year, how many magicians are there on Britain Got Talent? How many magicians? Desolate magicians. Oh, but you dare call them to come to Jesus Christ, and then they begin to wring their hands, and they dry their hands as if their hands were wet by imaginary towel. Then we invite them to come to Jesus, they begin to give excuses. And they call witchcraft entertainment. They call witchcraft entertainment. That's what Babylon did. Babylon was doing seduction. Babylon was dressing provocatively. Anybody dresses provocatively. You say, "Devil, whether they open it up or they wear something that closes it up, but you can see through, it's still seductive." And many are caught in the webs of seduction, in the webs of Babylon, the great horror. Holy Spirit, help me tonight, Lord. I'm gonna ask you to work on as a homework for this week. We're gonna work on Numbers, in chapter 25, and verse 2. "And they called people together unto sacrifices of their gods; and the people did eat and bowed down to their gods; and Israel joined himself unto Baal Pel. And the anger of the Lord was kindled against Israel." And look at who caused that? Who caused that? Who caused that? It was nobody else, none other than our dear friend, Belem. The Bible talked about the death of Belem in the book of Numbers. Can't find it right here, right now, but I believe it's not too far from Numbers 20... Oh, hold on. Numbers 31, I believe. Yeah. Yeah, Numbers 31. And look at verse 14. "Moses was very wroth with the officers of the host and the captains of a thousands, captains of a hundreds, which came forth from the battle. And Moses said unto them, 'Have you saved the women alive?'" Who are you... Who did you save alive, the women? What kind of women? Provocatively... Provocatively dressed women, seductive dressed women, seductively dressed women, high push-ups, high pump-ups women. And some men, too. You've got some drags and some pimps. You know, because anything that goes inside the five arenas where your body has got holes has access to your spirit. I'll tell you the five arenas where you go holes. Just think about it. Your eyes got holes, that's why you can cry. That's why tears can come out of your eyes. Your ears have got holes. They are the entrance, they are the gateways to your spirit realm. Your nose has got holes, that's the third one. Your mouth is the biggest organ in your body that has got hole. And... and your nether region has got holes. Those are the areas of your life where the devil will try to put something into you. And what's the biggest sin after idolatry? It's adultery or fornication. That's the biggest sin. That's, that's the only sin that will get God to, to cause trouble for a person fast and quick. Apart from idolatry is adultery or fornication. It's defilement of the body. And that body defilement eventually defiles your, you can defile the spirit, but you can defile the mind. The Bible says in James that we should lay aside all filthiness and superfluity of nuttiness. See, some people hear these words and they just shake their heads. Some people don't even want to hear it at all. That's why they are not here. They're going chasing life. You know, to be honest with you, most churches don't get filled up on Wednesday's Bible study because people are tired. And that's why we are recording this so that people can have a go at the word of God and be blessed by the word of God. So yeah, you may not be able to come to church on a Wednesday evening. That's not very good. But if you're so tired, so tired, so tired because you're going working, but you need to hear the word of God. You need to keep this MP3 file close to your spirit, man, man. You need to listen to it. As I was saying to you, Babylon is about seduction. It's about pomposity. It's about saying that there is nobody like you. God says, "Well, I'll tell you, there is, there are other, there are other people like, that you have not even seen. If you think that I cannot raise up children from this, from you will not give me praise, Jesus says, "I'll get these stones to, to shout Ozana to God." And these days of sexual depoetry. It's crazy. It's crazy how many emails that, that come into your email box. You that have email boxes, please in Jesus' name, as you receive, set your spam level, S-P-A-M, S-P-A, is it S-P-A-M? Yeah, I was going to spell S-P-A-S-M. S-P-A-M. High, 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 because they, even I set mine very high, but these demonic people still have a way of getting to your email box and say, "Hey, do you want sex?" Who says I'm hungry for sex? Hey, do you want, lonely women want man. Lonely, I don't know how they got to know every, they know about you because they know you're a man. The computer can tell you're a man. It can. He's a robot. He knows how many forms you filled out. He know how, he know how, what you signed your name as. And they're offering you things that you don't want. You don't want this, but they have been pushed at you. Why don't we just push the gospel at them and see their reaction? Now, they don't want the gospel pushed at them. They will soon call the police. They will soon report to you for violation, for privacy, for infringement of rights, for, for being aggressive. He's aggressive with the gospel, really? Or you are not aggressive with your seduction. You are not aggressive with the kind of clothes you wear. Even on national TV, clothes that, dresses that are designed by, and those dresses are crazy. They are expensive. And but they're all just, wash, wash me down, see me through kind of thing. Pornography, vices on the internet is the biggest industry in the world right now. Most men have sent pornography. Some women have sent pornography. Christian people. It's true. It's just a way to tarnish your spirit. Just give you, just give you a little bit of, if, an iron filing that chips at you. And Jesus says, "This devil, king of this world, come to me," and he finds nothing in me. Think, think with me as I close. What if the devil comes to you tonight? Will he find something in you that he can attach to? Something in you? Some lies? Some deceit? Some deception? Some horrible nature? Will you remember the words you are taught? Will you? When you read Numbers 31 and 25, Numbers 25, chapter 25, and Numbers 31, you will see how God told them to kill Belem. The end of Belem was horrible. That is the end of everyone and every nation. That does not get that. Every nation that decides that they are going to mislead God's people. They are going to seduce God's people. Do you know how many people are out there of both sexes that are not willing to get married? Just they want to seduce. And you know who they are looking to seduce? The good people. The godly people. The God-fearing people. Oh, may that not be your case in Jesus' name. May the devil not be able to get at you. May the devil not be able to find you. Father, we pray tonight in the name of Jesus Christ that, that the power of Babylon will not be able to get at us. The power of Babylon will not be able, it comes in different forms. It comes in, you know, making people serve as slaves. You work, you work and work and work and work and you have nothing to show for it. That's the power of Babylon, is seduction. You stop away all your energy away from the word of God, away from Bible, away from fellowship, away from church. You get tired the end of the week. And you do it week after week, week after week, week after week, month after month, month after month. You discover one year is gone. You haven't even had the chance to fellowship with God. Deep in your heart, your hearts are hollow. No knowledge of word of God in your heart. And so the devil comes one day and throws an attack of sickness at you. And you have no immunity because he's eroded your immunity and you fall down flat on your face. And it kills thousands of Christians. Hundreds of thousands of Christians die because Babylon and the system of Babylon has taken control of their lives. Father, we rebuke the spirit of falling for Babylon. Give us extra strength to love you, oh God. Extra strength to care for the things of yours. We prayed with thanksgiving in Jesus' name.